Okay. Let's get started. We have the old minutes in front of us? Yes?
Yes, it was a struggle.
Oh, okay. Do you want to hear a motion to accept the old minutes?
Motion to accept the old minutes.
Do you want to hear a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? Any discussion on them? Okay, shall we just accept them as is? Or do you have your questions on them?
No.
Okay. Chief Hawkins?
Yep. Got a couple of things and a couple additions to the report that you don't have in front of you that I haven't since I've made the report up. It's normal month of May, I should say June now. Not too bad. Repair issues, I talked about it for the last couple of months. We are going to take in, we've scheduled for the engine rescue and the other engine for those ladder rack issues that we have to be fixed, going to be billed in June in New Year's budget. Based on this year's budget, it's pretty much depleted. A coin drop, I'm asking for permission to do a coin drop on Saturday, June 7th from eight to four, and Saturday, October 4th from eight to four. We do two of them every year. Just ask permission for that. Also, the utility 327, trustee Taylor came to the meeting with us when we opened the bids on that. It was only one bid. It was awarded to Wayall Chevrolet Greenland. The committee's been informed along with the membership upstairs of that. That truck was ordered, it should be here within the next 30 days hopefully. Firehouse software, regards to that, I'm going to finish up meeting with a couple other reps. I've met with three of them already. With that, as June's budget comes around, I want to get that order after the get-go this year so we can get that in place. It's, like I said, depending on what we end up with the software that includes everything we need to one shot, it's anywhere from $1,500 to $3,000. And that's the training, the updates, everything we can think of. But that'll do everything we need to in the fire service from now until I'm gone, that's for sure.
And your computer model software?
Yes, we just bought two laptops last year and one more. We also got nine of them donated from Time Warner Cable. So it works out very well, they're pretty good about giving us computers that are really decent and been cleaned up. The status on the firehouse, talk about that, we'll fill a little bit regards to that. The other thing was, is I sent a hundred to all you guys who are actually promoting your box for my department. Just regards to the procurement policy of $500. As you see in there, basically I asked that this time we could at least raise it to $1,000 for this upcoming year. And then out of that, try that out at the end of the year if we seem to have problems, and that's your discretion, do what you want. But I would like to see at least on the fire department's end to raise that to $1,000 without approval because it's kind of tough to make any purchases right now in a speedy amount of time. So you do have that in front of you. The old pickup truck, real quick, that went down to the village garage. The lettering has been painted over on that, it's been out of service for about six months now. With that, it was turned over to the village of Greenland when we bought it to be put on the insurance. So therefore, at this point in time, it's extra property. With that, I believe you've got to have something from the village board that says that we can go ahead and release that pickup or sell that.
How old is that, chief?
That's 1979.
You have to declare its surplus.
People that want it, correct. So that's what I'm looking for, is the village board to declare that surplus.
Like the floorboards and everything or else of that?
Yeah, it's, I think our highest bid right now that they've, we've had people give to the membership was $200. It's not worth anything. We would like to take and get rid of that money, or get rid of the truck and take that $200, whatever it might be is, and put that back into the vehicle that we're getting right now as well, based on we've got to put some lights and sirens in and stuff like that. That's just going to save us taking out of our equipment budget.
So we have to open that for bid, or the bid has occurred?
I don't think so, I think based on that... George, correct me if I'm wrong, I think because of the minute amount of it, right, we can basically just offload that as long as the membership upstairs receives that money. Because the department actually bought the truck and the village did. But we turned it over to you guys in order to put on insurance, just like the new one would be. I still need permission from you guys to be able to get rid of that again because it's actually yours at that point. So I'm looking to see if we can, when we do that in the minutes, just show up this surplus and I can get rid of that. The other thing is the ladder testing, which comes up annually, it's usually in June or July. It's going to be scheduled for July, it's a lot of money. What we've done this year, a captain and myself have been talking to mutually departments around the area. We're going to save quite a bit of money by having multiple departments come here and have ladder testing at the same time. So that's going to happen in July, but we should save around $1,000 on our end of it, at least by having three or four departments come here and everybody do ladder tests up in this area at the same time. So that's going to happen, you're going to see that bill come through probably July, end of July.
And the testing's done by the state?
No, the testing's done by an outside outfit that actually goes in and marks everything down and documents everything to a T, which meets NFP, you know, some compliance.
And they're checking the truck itself or the personnel?
No, they check just the ladders on the trucks. So in other words, all the ground ladders plus the aerial device. That's why it's a lot of money for us because of the aerial device. But out of this, by bringing other departments in, we're going to save a lot of money on that by doing the aerial device when they do everything else. So it should work well. The other thing was, we had the high school prom awareness thing, I think the PD chief fell along with one of his officers came up with us, the rescue squad and mutually departments from Middle Falls and Casa Yuna. We had a really good turnout Friday, like 27 people were there, I believe it was. We cut a car apart up there and actually did it, the chief had one of his guys do a DWI awareness and arrest somebody, a false arrest or fake arrest on somebody, I don't know.
Don't say false.
Yeah, false.
He's an attorney.
Right. A fake arrest on somebody, it actually went rather well. I'm going to pass this through to try to get that under motion and it went very well Friday. Heads off to that. The power company, I talked to them today, that's doing all the line work around here. They were out front today, they dropped new poles in and they started running lines. They're going to be putting a new entrance line to the firehouse to the corner of the building, but that feeds the whole village office. With that, we're going to be out of power for about two hours. What I will do is I'm going to get in touch with them again tomorrow and stay with them, we're going to do it at the end of this week. And out of that, we're going to try to schedule that for the end of the day. So what will happen is, is I'll let Diane know, so around 2:00 she gets out early, you know, you know, the whole program. But that way we can shut everything down, get the main shut down on that before they do that so we don't have a problem with buying a lot of equipment when we get done.
Take down the air conditioning.
Actually, they get more money than us, maybe we should just let them do it, but anyways.
Are they going to, they're going to take the power out around town in a, you know, a wave kind of thing as they do the work?
As far as I know, I don't know anything about them taking any power out of town. From what I understand, this is the only entrance line that they're doing. Everything else is being done hot. So in other words, what they're doing is they're actually transferring power in the same process, hooking up one then releasing the other one. That's from what I understand out of the whole concept around here. The only one that they're touching right now is our entrance line to the village offices. If something changes, please, yeah, let us know too because, you know, we're going to get calls. I think that's all I have.
Question on the software, so you're dealing with a couple different reps?
Yep.
Is that for the same software package coming from three different companies? Or is it three separate software packages that you're looking at?
No, what it is, in a nutshell, they're all the same, but some offer different areas, different things. Some of them can be put on a server, all the ones you have to buy independent programs for each computer, things like that that are a major difference, you know. So basically, for them to download one on each computer, it's like 500 bucks each computer. Versus one of them can put it on a server and the server can serve all the computers is more of what we're looking for. So we've got six total that we've been working with, three of them actually are saying they're independent computers and I'll be meeting with another one that actually says he can do it on a server for us right now, so I don't have to buy software for each computer, or a license, I should say, for each computer. So that's where we're headed with that. And when we get set and done, hopefully we can find something that has all the programs we need in it, but also can be put on the server so it's a lot cheaper and we don't have to buy programs or licenses for each computer.
Does that include a backup program?
That does. And of course, we're happy to give all of that included in the price. That's what we're looking at right now. It also intertwines with everything that the state requires, so it's just going to make it nice so we don't have to do our separate NIFRS reports, which is our state reports on a different piece of paper like we do now. Right now, it's documented on one, then we have to do a completely different report that has all the same information inside of the state.
Can you send it electronically with the new stuff?
We, yes, it'll be completely done like that, or we can back it up with the CD also, which we'll do, so we'll have all the software all right in the house. If you'd like to look, take a look at any programs, you're welcome to.
Once you buy it and install it, come up and take a look at it.
Okay.
You don't have to look over your shoulder.
Okay, no, no problem.
I'll tell you guys which one.
Anybody has any information, I do have one of the guys that are in the fire department that does install software for LA, which is President Genievic. He's going to be with you when I meet with this next guy based on the server because we did get a server donated to us from Time Warner also. So that makes it nice, so we should be able to hook up all five computers right now to one, to the one server. And we'll just lock things down in different areas, it works very well.
President Genievic, he has IT for the state, so.
President Genievic, yes. The president, you've met him a couple times.
Probably, I've met so many people up there, I can't keep them straight.
So that's all I have.
Do we want to take up for discussion raising their purchase limit?
I personally agree with it.
I also agree.
Sounds good.
Yeah, what I think what we would all like is, when you do that, if you could notify us at the next meeting, I assume that you would do it anyhow.
Yep.
But we would have to be able, just to keep track of it, so at the end of the year we'd be able to determine whether or not it's really going to put up here.
And plus, I also think that through the committee for the fire department, you would inform us of these purchases. We can let, also let Diane know so she can, if it's a, just so we all know.
No problem, it'll be a report like it is now. So if there's anything over $500...
So what you're doing though, is you're changing your procurement policy, that section 3A, where it says the written fire approval for any purchase of $500, and we want to change that to $1,000?
Yeah, we're changing it just for the fire department.
Just for the fire department?
Yep.
I know that Chief Watkins is very good at formating everybody either verbally or through the email, through the email.
Is there a problem with changing it just for the fire department?
Well, I just think that sounds like you're... I don't know, I'll just change it, I just want to know.
That's who the request is coming from, so.
Right, well, I'm just, this is our overall...
No, she's got a point.
Our overall procurement policy, so I don't know how specifically supposed to...
Yeah, I mean, I was looking at making a temporary amendment across the board, like I mentioned last month, but I don't know how much it affects the chief of police or the superintendent of public works. But I think it's got to be close to the same because it's tough.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough to buy stuff for $500, you know, I mean...
Yeah.
So should we make that a general procurement policy that way?
No, go ahead.
I don't, I don't, I wouldn't see where there'd be a problem with it. It's certainly makes life a little easier for us.
I mean, to go out and to buy even something small.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, I mean... Nothing, you know, I mean, I can go out and spend $500 on parts for a pickup that I'm working on, you know, I mean, it's not, it's not hard to spend that amount of money, you know.
What do you think, chief?
There's your alternator.
It's really not affecting me, but I would think. But if you're going to do it, you're going to have to change the policy, I think the whole policy.
Lyle?
Yeah, I want to wait past it. How many times does this happen, come up? Do you have to come to the board and ask for it? Over $500 or something like that? Anytime you want to buy a pump, a generator... So a few times a month? What? Well, I wouldn't say a few times a month, maybe two or three times a year. We had like an issue with one of our pumps, our mud pumps that we use on water leaks. One guy, we had to go down and borrow one from the sewer plant and, you know, it's just, we... Yeah, I mean, they were, I can't remember exactly now, I'll say, I had, I called three places, I don't remember, they were all over $1,000.
And the biggest thing that I've run into is repairs. This is where it comes in. I'm not looking at buying new equipment. New equipment, I've always tried to reach out if it's anything over $500 and let the committee know ahead of time what we're going to be purchasing. But a lot of this falls into the equipment end of it. We have something that goes out, portable pump, like he said, whatever, one of our pumps on the apparatus go down, it's well over $500, you're out the get-go. It costs us about 300 to have someone come up and look at it. I mean, so it takes a lot, and then to put that truck in the back burner for another 30 days in order to get permission to get somebody to look at what it's going to cost, to me, that's, that's kind of what I'm looking for. And, you know, like I said, an alternator for one of the trucks is 600 and something dollars. We just did this with one of the engines, we just had to do it with a trickle charging unit. It was $600.
Okay, so the general consensus seems to be to do it across the board, so do I hear a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second you.
Aye. Sounds good.
I, I, okay. Any questions from the public on the fire department report? Any further discussion amongst board members? Nope. Frank?
The only thing other than the report is, he's waiting for proposals for redoing the streets. On the agenda is either church or more. If that's anything you told me.
Okay. And we also, Lyle and I and Light and...
Leo.
Leo, thank you. Met with a couple of people this past month from CT Mail Associates and another company, TVGA from Saratoga, another engineer for looking at the issue of remediating well number two. And they're both going to get reports back to us hopefully within the next two weeks, then we can take a look at those, compare it to the report, to the proposal we got from the Barge Group and then decide to have it go forward with it. But it sounds like both the people we just met with CT Mail and TVGA will be a much better fit for us than the Barge Group. Until we actually get the reports in front of us, we won't know that for certain. Any discussion in the board for the DPW? Questions from the public?
Tell me a little bit more about repairs. Has a decision on the streets remained or are you still...
He's, they've measured both streets, he's waiting for quotes on what it's going to cost.
Okay. Churches, it's not state, is it?
No, no, churches, village, unfortunately. And it's quite long. Maybe we can push it to a state street. Yeah, maybe.
Change the name, and that will have trucks going up it.
Yeah. Yep. More so than already do.
Any other questions for the DPW? Chief Bell?
I have nothing, other than the report, according to you, sir.
Question from the board?
Busy, ma?
Yeah. Warm, warm weather.
You look good.
Where were most of the rest? What was the, most of the rest?
I think there was three DWIs and then there, I don't know.
That was the most common, WI and everything else?
That is the... Barge niece, I think there was a few down this one.
Any questions from the public?
You're doing a good job.
They say questions, not comments. All right, hold on, that's okay.
We've got to get a new trial.
George, we're going to throw you in jail.
That's all right? New stuff, if you want something.
The mayor's report, I went over the two, two of the meetings that I had with Leo and Lyle about the water, so I'm going, I'll need to go into those again. The one thing, and it's in writing here, the people can pick it up and go through, I'm not going to spend the time to go through absolutely everything. But the one point that came up at the conference out in Hyde Park, that was sponsored by the local conference of mayors, somebody suggested it would be a good idea if the village came up with a vision statement. Because it's going to take a long time for us to update our comprehensive plan, which is probably a two or three or four year long process. But if we came up with a real simple vision statement that the board could vote on and approve, then that becomes a legal document. And the reason that's important is, we could say that it's important for the village, for any new commercial development, to match our architectural standards. So whatever new building comes in, fits in and blends in with our community. Because again, we're looking at the possible sale of the IGA property and who knows what's going to end up there. And if it really is going to be a big commercial development like a Rite Aid or something like that, we want to be able to have some legal recourse to force them to design it in a way that's going to be, look best for the village. So what I'll do is I'll try and draft a vision statement and then pass it around circulated by email throughout the board. And hopefully, probably not by next meeting, but maybe the meeting afterwards, we can then bring it up for discussion with the public and it'll be published and we'll get some feedback from everyone. It's not going to be a huge, long document. But obviously, if people have any input into something they would like to have into that, please contact myself or any one of the board members and we'll certainly take it into consideration. We're not just going to like vote on it and say, this is it, we want some sort of input from the public. But I think to have control over the development for 184 Main Street would be best if you could have something in writing first, before we head down that road. Also, I met with Pete Corner and later on with Mary Ann Brown, who is a professional grant writer. And Mary Ann has agreed to help us do research on grants for the village. She doesn't want to get involved into anything with the IGA property or refurbish unless she wants to work in much smaller projects. So I asked her to get ahold of Pete, the two of them could sit down together and look into funding possibilities and grant funding possibilities for a playground and skateboard park and things along those lines. And she's willing to do all this pro bono for the time being. At some point down the road, if we really begin to abuse her generosity, then she may decide to start building us. But for the time being, she wants to do strictly as a volunteer, which I really commend her for. Questions from anyone in the board or the public? Back to the board first.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that in what you just brought up, Pete and Mary Ann, was that I would like to make a motion to have Pete explore developing the property on Prospect Street for a multi-use trail system. And I gave him, you know, a little bit of information on, you know, how you go about doing that. But anyway, we own 14 acres of property up on Prospect Street that is wooded and Mrs. Gannon, of course, owned it and left it to the village. And I think that it would be in her spirit to move forward with something like a multi-use trail system where, you know, kids could run and bike and ski, that kind of thing. So, you know, there is...
Yeah, I'd like to extend that a little further if I may, give you another goal, which is what David mentioned last year, or last month, with the, up near the reservoir, we own property up there. So there's two potential areas that we could have some trails.
That's okay. Sure, absolutely.
And in this grant process that the state has set up for parks and recreation, if you can tie things together so that you can go from one area with a trailing system to another area, you get awarded more points in the, in the score. And that's how they award the grants, is by achieving scores for your ingenuity on the development of the trails. And, you know, so there are a lot of assets that we have in the village that might be able to be tied into doing a really great trail system. And, you know, there's property along the school, there's the 14 acres on Prospect Street. How large is the parcel of the north area?
About 160 acres, something like that.
160 acres, it's in the town, but the village owns it. So, you know, there's, there are these things to explore. And if you can get one small aspect of it put together, then the following year you can build on it. And they, they just love that.
Is Verizon Tower going to be, do we know when that's going to start construction and everything?
No.
Because that's going to be, if we, if we write a grant right now to have a natural trail system, which they're very restricted on, on what can be built there and things, and then all of a sudden they come back and they see that their property has a cell tower in the middle of it, that could be, we could have penalties.
Well, the cell tower will be on the right hand side of it. And there's a cell tower on the left hand side of the property also.
We would just have to be very, very clear in the application, what's going on.
Right. So I would, I would need to know, because there's a deadline on these grants for the end of June. And I don't know if, is the cell tower going to be starting the construction before the end of June or...
I believe so.
They are. Do we have documentation from, because we may need documentation from them that it's, you know, like an impact study or something like that that we could include in there? Saying that we're allowing people to hike in an area that is said to be okay, not that they're going to get, you know, radiation from hike, you know, from, because that's a big thing with, I mean, there was a big fight in the other park about that just recently. That they didn't want trail systems anywhere near, there was a radius that they had developed.
Okay, I have to call one of their contact guys tomorrow, so I'll try and get more information.
That'd be great, if you could fly. And if they gave us, if they had surveyed the land and so we could get the most accurate survey of that property, because I'm sure we're going to have to include all of that.
Okay.
And then we could use theirs rather than paying somebody to do that.
Sure.
Thanks. But I'll definitely do it.
You want a second motion?
I'll second that motion.
Do we have to make that a motion to Pete or just a request?
That's just a...
I think just a, just a guidance.
I think one other thing I would like to also, going back to, with the town beach, and we're also looking at trying to add, if we build up towards the reservoir, collaborate with town towards trying to build some kind of a, it's a far-reaching goal, mind you, but to get something where the kids can go from the village out to the village beach, without having to worry about...
On 29.
Like a path of some sort?
I know, a long time ago, they talked about a path in the... Some way.
George, has that ever been discussed for police wise?
Just extend the boost to the village line.
Could, could the Gannon property, because of where it sits, could there be an easement created going down the Gannon property? So people could park and hike and then go down the hill?
No.
To the, no, okay.
No, there's a right of way onto the property, but it's not, it's only a 25-foot stretch that runs up to access the water tower.
That road going out of town to the beach is so narrow and tight that, and I know your guys are always sitting there and it's speeding.
Consider, I know like in Cambridge, they, from where the park, 56 is where they want to put this...
Skate park.
Skate park and playland up there, there's an issue because the sidewalks end going in right down 22 where the trailer, where the entrance to the trailer park is. And it becomes an issue because there's no sidewalks for kids to access.
Right.
So they're looking at some sort of easy access to that, that whole situation too.
Right. Does the village own a certain amount past the paved road that would be people's front yards? Like if we made it a path from the end of the sidewalks right now?
There's no sidewalks.
No, but I mean, from where the sidewalks end on 29 in town or in the village here?
Well, no, there's no sidewalks. The sidewalks end long before this, you know.
The sidewalk ends at Prospect Street intersection.
But the DOT has eminent domain for certain...
But that side, the karate studios, the last side.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the DOT has eminent domain for a certain distance off the road.
Fifty feet off the center of the highway.
But before we completely segue into the youth report, are there any other questions on the mayor's report? Any discussion amongst the board on the mayor's report before we completely segue to the youth?
You're on the committee to choose a superintendent.
Superintendent, that tomorrow night or next morning? For you two?
I am also.
Peter?
Okay, the Spiritual Life Center program finished last meeting that we were here. It was the day one or so of the program. It went off wonderfully, there was one child who left, but that was completely because they were forced to go there in the first place from their parents, as a glorified baby service, babysitting service. So they left and, and there was no, there was the request made by Spiritual Life Center. If they wanted their money back, they would have returned it, but the parents never asked for that because it was totally initiated by them, no other reason. But it was a successful program. I did request from them that they create an evaluation. And because of the age of the clientele up there and stuff, they weren't going to do an evaluation at the time of the program. Because, you know, you're getting first, if first grader or second grader to do an evaluation, it'd be useless. So they're going to be sending something after people have time to process, sending something home to parents. Because Spiritual Life Center should do that for good business practices anyway. So they're trying to develop something that would be more universal. So hopefully by next meeting, I'll have some actual data that says it was a great program So hopefully by next meeting I'll have some actual data that says it was a great program, people would want to see it continued and so on. But I think from everything I heard, it was, it went really well, plus we had great weather and.
So from there, Peter, you'd be able to develop some testimonials to support it in the future.
Exactly, yeah. And, you know, it was all verbal, but there was absolutely no negativity at all. And they had a great week weather-wise too, so that added to it. If we had rainy weather, that probably could have deterred a lot because they're limited indoor programming space.
But they haven't.
Yep. They, you know, just to follow up with that, we have the payment in right now that you guys are signing for them, so that should clear up that. I still am awaiting a bill, and I don't know if it's come in, Diane, from the school district, but they've been very lax on that. Like, they said, oh, well, we'll get it to you when we do, so. And I was only given a range of prices, so, and I know that the leader of the bus garage, Mr. Justin, I believe it is, had said that, you know, he was gonna throw in a couple of days that he worked for free, you know. So they said a range from a hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars, so we will be giving a bill for that. And that was budgeted in originally, but we still haven't seen a bill for that, so.
Don't rush it.
Yeah, I'm not, I just, I don't want it to come like five months down the road, you know. But that's the case, we're still waiting on that, and then we'll be free and clear on that. The cost was good, but if we want to continue this, I mean, you're talking about an average cost of thirteen thousand dollars for a week with transportation, programming and everything like that, and staffing. I don't know if we want to continue doing multiple programs or just a one-week program, so that's something we need to discuss in the future. The scholarship information, I got your email that you had sent to the superintendent up at school.
And I'm meeting with Matt tomorrow afternoon to nail down the exact wording that the school needs.
Okay, so I'm assuming that that's being taken care of. I haven't, I've just chatted back and forth with Matt, and he said that you and him will be in Florida, so I'm gonna say that that's done at this point with that. So, you know, that's all about that. And I met with you regarding the, you know, my ideas and vision and your ideas and vision. And we agreed that an advisory group should be created to look into, so it's not my vision of a playground and a skate park, it's more the vision of the people who are gonna be using it, and so on and so forth. So I waited because it's closed captioning, if the papers could put it in the minutes, that we are looking for volunteers to be on an advisory committee to help design the playground and skate park for the future youth of Greenwich.
And location for them as well.
And location. And that's something I would need to talk with you guys about too of the, and that goes back to what we were talking about with hiking sites, what is available? You know, if we own pieces of land, you know, Leo was talking about the, down on the river there, you know, and George didn't like that idea.
Leo's not up in the hall.
Leo wants a resurgence of Mill Hall. But, you know, what sites are available, and then we can talk about that with the advisory group. Because I know of sites and where I favor things, but then, you know, we could talk about, with George too, of what would be safe and visible versus tucked away and not visible.
Calling you.
Actually, I talked to Diane. If they could contact, I thought it would be easier because it's more of a village office thing, me being a consultant. So if they could contact Diane, then Diane would contact me, so they can just call a village clerk or whatever. And I want to get that group up and running so that we can at least have one or two meetings before the next village board meeting. I've given the information to David about the company that I would like to use. They have now expanded their company and they do skate parks. And I've spoken to a group that they built for out in Cortland, New York, and it's an unbelievable park. And it's wonderful. They told us the pluses, you know, the pluses and minuses. But if you did want to take a look at their literature, I have it here, and they, they not only do the best playgrounds in the world, but they also do now the best skate parks, so it'd be a one-stop shop, which would be nice. And I talked to David about the financial aspects of it, and it's cost-effective to do it that way. I think the police department and I would need to communicate greatly on a skate park and how we want to do that. Then we also have to talk with the lawyers about liability and insurance and how we want to do that. Because there's skate parks like in Saratoga Springs where it's only open for certain hours and you have to wear gear. And you literally sign up with a fee every year, say thirty dollars, and you get a card and you can use it and your parents have signed off on a waiver. That's one way, insurance companies love that way. But then there's other ways where it's literally open nonstop, you know, and it's basically use it as will. And then the village still has to take the liability of it because they constructed it. And there are grants out there that are pro padding. And then there are a lot of grants, like the bigger ones, like Tony Hawk Foundation and stuff, that are pro no rules, because that's the.
That's Tony Hawk.
Yeah, it's Tony Hawk. So, I mean, honestly, they will not give you money if you say they have to wear a helmet, that type of thing. And there are few grants that say the other way, which is, blows my mind, but.
Yeah, that's kinda like that.
Yeah. So that's where I'm at right now, and the other thing was just to ask where you'd like me to go next. I'll continue to do the advisory groups on the playgrounds and start reporting back designs and drafts and ideas. I'll do the trail systems. And then I took a little bit of a backburn on the music festival right now because.
There's a lot.
School's ending, and I don't want to add more to their plate and new superintendent. But I figure when school starts up next year, we can start talking about that in September, and then maybe hopefully have something in place for.
For the bicentennial, which would be really nice.
Exactly. And we talked about that, we would have to, with copyright laws and things like that, like how can we use Kim's music if we only own certain song rights and we don't own the most important, I'll Be Home For Christmas and things like that.
Well, I was talking to somebody in the parking lot a couple of days ago on Tom, can't remember his last name now, he's a town resident.
You sure?
Perhaps. He used to teach at St. Lawrence where Kim Gannon taught. And there's a number of people up there that have done a lot of research in Kim's music and his history and life biography and all that kind of stuff. There's also a group of singers called the Laurentian Singers.
Right.
That know his music very, very well and they perform it on a regular basis. So I think with that type of.
Yeah, they own forty, forty-five percent of the song, and then it's, the rest of it's divvied out to different groups. But he has two songs that he's given St. Lawrence as his, that was his school, if you went to school at.
Yeah, so I think with the ties we have here with St. Lawrence with Tom and Don Boyd, no, Mimi Boyd's husband.
Bill.
Bill Boyd, sorry. Yeah, that we would be able to work something out with St. Lawrence, I'm sure.
Great, okay. And we're not, you know, obviously we're not making money on it, it's something that would be promoting his memory, so.
And if we do sell tickets, it would be just to roll the money back into the youth commission.
Correct. So that's all I have, if you guys have any questions or anything.
Questions from the board? Any questions?
Well, just one thing, a location seems like the obvious place to start with the skateboard park.
Yeah.
So do we have a mechanism for, you're gonna get information from the public about this, but is there?
I was mainly gonna use the information on the public to design the parks. You know, like, I can envision, I already have three people on the playground park. They all have young children who would be using the park, so what would be safe, what would be educational and things like that. The skate park, I would look at youth who are gonna use the park, and they can tell me, you know, I feel old when I start talking to those guys.
Another thing is, you can stay and hopefully with the park.
Right, square footage.
Therefore, we can figure out from there.
And parking and accessibility and all that kind of stuff, and that's where we need to start.
Skateboards, we don't need parking.
So, that's that.
Any questions from the public for Peter? Okay, next on the agenda, at seven fifteen, is the permissive referendum not to spend an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars from the Police Capital Reserve Equipment Fund for a new police car. George?
I just need approval. We're set to go. It's gonna replace the two thousand and buy a public. Now, the time it gets here, it's probably gonna be at least two months, talking to the people in New Jersey today, so. Carl have pushing close to a hundred thousand by then, so.
And you ordered, and obviously since you talked to somebody in Jersey, you know exactly who you're getting the car from.
Yeah, yeah, it's done on New York State contract. It's Ocean Motors this year, auto ocean, so in New Jersey.
Does anybody have a question?
I have a question on whether this is subject to permissive referendum.
Well, it's my understanding, and I don't know if I'm wrong, but if they take it, the money been allocated into my capital reserve. So in order to spend out of said capital reserve, it has to go to a referendum.
Permissive referendum, okay.
That's what I was thinking.
Through there, at least in this guide, it didn't mention that, but if this is the way you've been doing.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's the way it's been done.
You need to publish the, you have to pass the resolution, publish the resolution within ten days and state that, you know, the people have the rights to, you know, to file a petition to force a, you know, a referendum, so. That's, that's what we're doing, and I'm just, that's, okay. You know.
Because I've never done, there, past practice, as far as I know.
Okay, so how do we publish this?
Oh, there, it's in the village law, so I can send you a letter. But permissive, permissive referendum only would know unless.
Unless it's published.
Yeah, you have to publish it.
Well, I published that.
Right, that's been published.
I published that.
You already published that?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That we were holding up from this referendum.
Tonight.
Tonight.
That was the idea.
So if they want to debate it.
They'll be here tonight.
Okay.
Any discussion for the board?
No, check it out, Ian.
Yeah. Any discussion for the public? Do I make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And the motion is?
Use the funds above the car.
I'll make that motion that we go forward with the purchase of the car.
One second.
Aye.
Call in favor? Aye. George, touch car, please. All right, open bids for unleaded gasoline, and let's hope and pray that they both aren't exactly the same. You wanna take one? That's what happened two months ago. We opened the bids and they were both identical. Last month, we had no bids at all. What you got there?
Three twenty-two five.
Ooh, three nineteen.
There we go.
We got a reminder, Bovet.
Who was it, Bovet?
Bovet, yep.
What was it?
Bovet was three nineteen per gallon.
And Main Care is three twenty-two five. This is unreg, unallowed.
Regular gasoline delivered to two village garages.
We go by the mark.
Twenty-two cents on Main Care.
Markup is eighteen cents per gallon.
Bovet's eighteen cents.
Yep.
And Main Care.
Never sleeps.
And how do you, how much gas, twenty nine two?
What was, how much was Main Care?
Main Care's markup is twenty-two cents per gallon. So Bovet's the cheaper one.
And this is good, this is for.
So we don't need a motion, that'll accept us, we just wanna have to go forward with the habit bid? Okay, I'll make that motion, we accept the Bovet bid.
Oh, okay.
Second?
Aye.
Aye, discussion?
Is it for a year?
Do I hear a vote?
Bovet, we accept it.
Okay.
I'm still trying to figure out how we buy gasoline.
Okay, next up on the agenda, there's some information here from Kathy Tompkins from the chamber about the street skates program. Kathy's not here to discuss it, so I'll kind of go over it very, very briefly. There was a grant for twenty thousand dollars from the New York Main Street Grant Steep Skates Program, which is gonna be used to put in new trees going down Main Street from the traffic light down towards the bridge, and also putting in some park benches. What they're looking at at this point are two different types of trees, a lowered tree on one side of the street where the electric lines are, and a different type of tree that grows taller on the other side of the street. And as part of the grant, the village has agreed to donate four thousand dollars in in-kind services, which basically means the village will be ripping up the concrete and finding something to do with it so they can actually plant the trees. And there is, we're buying, wait. The chamber, because I say we, because I'm the chamber as well, so I tend to get confused sometimes. But the chamber is buying the trees through Mandy Springs Nursery in Granville, New York. And they're doing that for two reasons. One, because they're local, they want to spend the money local, if at all possible. They're at least in Washington County. And also the trees are grown in Washington County, whereas a lot of the other nurseries that they spoke to, they need to come in from Pennsylvania or Virginia or someplace else, and they're not acclimatized to our kind of weather. So the chamber's feeling was that if we buy local and they're grown local, we're much more likely to have trees that are actually gonna live. And part of the program also includes, I believe it's a year-long maintenance project, where the nursery will come out, take a look at the trees, feed them if they need to, do some initial trimming if they need to, to make sure they're actually gonna live. So that should be starting later this summer, I'm not exactly sure when. But once that's in, it will certainly make a nice, nice addition to the village.
And what kind of trees?
Oh, boy. Crabapple on one side and honey locust on the other. Any questions, discussion?
Just a question regards to, as everybody talked to the state regards to what they're doing at the bridge and how far of an expansion they're doing before the trees in the sidewalks.
I believe this is part of that.
Okay.
But I might be wrong, but I believe that it is. But the state, again, has put that bridge project off for another, I think till two thousand, yeah.
They did, okay.
They keep paying.
I wasn't sure. I know the last time I heard it was gonna be this fall, which was a year ago, so I just wanna make sure.
No, I know, I know.
Trees in there, and all of a sudden they talk about.
But it's going from Main Street down to Washington Street.
Okay.
So it's not going all the way down the bridge itself.
How hard is the ripping of the concrete gonna be?
If they're doing it between the side and the street, there shouldn't be an issue with concrete.
Especially if you gotta get in there.
If there is, then they'll just jackhammer it out or cut it out, or.
Yeah.
I mean, we've got, we've got a sawmill with a diamond blade on it, it works.
If I were to, I mean, a specific piece, pull it off, do that, how long do you think, I'm just like a man of all, man of hours, I guess.
It would depend on the size of the piece of concrete and how thick, you know. I mean, if it's just a piece of sidewalk, I'd watch using five by five by four inches and we can bust on it pretty quick.
Do we have a specific place to dump the concrete, or we just take it up to the recycling center in town?
Uh, no, we usually take stuff like that to deliver.
To where?
The original. I mean, it's good, and still solid, good solid, which we could use a lot of, because there was a lot of brush that pushed over that, should really be covered with some better stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be a great place to put it.
How many trees?
It looks like it's, yeah.
It says forty-four on the thing. I had talked to Kathy and suggested that we cut back on the number of trees to include in the twenty thousand dollars. This is, this grant is a straight-up grant. Now, the labor isn't. But it's part of the Main Street facade improvement grant. To include the metal grates that go around the trees as opposed to then sticking the trees in the ground and slapping dirt on top of them and leaving them. So to, I think that that would be a terrific thing to do, was to get the metal grates included. Yeah, to protect them, yeah. And that's not in here, and that's pretty much all I have to, and I'm still concerned about the crabapples, even though it says not problematic. They will.
They grow up with crabapples?
Well, they're lovely trees, but they reduce little.
Until the fall.
This time of year, they're really pretty, and in the fall, they're.
They're beautiful. Pain in the butt.
Yeah, well, and I.
Got to clean up from.
You know, I had said, I don't think crabapples dropping on Main Street is the best.
Well, and I'm not even thinking about the crabapples themselves, I'm thinking of, and God forbid it happens, about kids that throw windows golden away.
So I'm still concerned about the crabapples.
And the chamber does have a long panoramic-type view of Main Street, of what it would look like with the trees there. So you're more than welcome to stop down and talk to Kathy and take a look at that. But no benches in place, just a place. Any questions from the public? Any more discussion? Mike?
On that, I'm pretty familiar, you know, with the stuff. And I think one other thing that they need to know about is there was a question of maybe two or three trees to be taken down that are overgrown, and one of them's just so badly butchered that it's dying, and that's what happens with some of these trees that are planted, is you cut them up so much, then they start to die. So I think what this group also needs to know is, and probably from the lawyers and through the town, is what it would take on an insurance scale for the village to remove these trees, because it will come under the village heading, they need someone to remove these trees, which they would have to be insured, so where does the village come down? which they would have to be insured, so where, where does the village come down as far as what these guys have to do?
I, which trees you talking about, Mike?
Excuse me?
Which trees are you talking about?
There is, there's a tree in front of our house in seventy-five.
Uh-huh.
Uh, there, there's a tree, um, in front of Overtime Antiques, it's like really bad, and that one definitely needs to come down. Um, and I think, I think there may be only two there, but there may be three. We don't really want ours to come down, so it may be just a point of one.
'Cause there's nothing in here about removing trees, it's only.
Yeah, well, I, uh, Judy had talked about it, um, there, there is one that needs to be, you know, at least one that needs to be taken down, so some thought, thought needs to be put into that as to, you know, the insurance, who would take it down, and what the liability of the village is.
Do you know, is that, do you know if Judy or anybody's spoken to Leo about this? Do you know if anybody, if Judy Fike or anybody's spoken to Leo Flynn about this?
Uh, I don't believe so, because I don't really know, uh, I, I'm not sure if they know exactly where they need to go, on this and who they need to talk to, but I can pass that along. And then the other thing is too, is like, uh, the crabapples.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the thing with the crabapples and why these trees were picked is because they don't really shed, they may shed a little bit, but this is food for the birds, so makes us look good. They'll sit on the trees, and I'm sure they'll be gone before the cold's really set in, but these trees do not shed, and if they do, it's very little, so, um, it's, it's, uh, not gonna be like tracked into stores, and the other thing I would be more concerned about is, is people walking their dogs and letting them, uh, do their business on the sidewalk, I'd be more concerned looking down for that than the crabapples.
Okay, well, I'll try and talk to Judy and Leo this week about the, the rest of, so. Any other questions? Okay, pay the bills, which we've already done, we have to take a motion, Diane, to approve paying the bills?
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And the motion is?
I was, I was tutored tonight by Tom Semenow. That's why I'm laughing, because he's told me three, four times, and says, you know, these are the things you should be saying. So just keep me straight, okay? I make a motion, and we pay the bills.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Aye. And that, Diane, that covers all, everything?
Yes, sir.
So right down to old business now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we view the procurement policy, which I don't have a copy of in front of me.
That's what we just did.
Right, right.
Oh, 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 okay, okay. We jumped ahead on that. Okay, um, we also, old business, I'm asking for permission to spend upwards of twelve hundred dollars for an appraisal on one eighty-four Main Street. I, I spoke to three different, um, commercial appraisals, and the price came at anywhere from a thousand to eighteen hundred dollars, which I thought was extraordinarily high, but I spoke to a real estate agent in Cambridge, and he said that really is typical for commercial property, especially in a small village, because they have to look so far afield to find comparable properties. It's not like where you're doing appraisal on an individual house, and you can look in the neighborhood and find four or five houses of similar size that the agent had been sold within the past year or two. He said, commercial, they really have to, really have to, um, put a little bit more time and effort into it. I think maybe also the prices are higher because of municipality, I don't really know, but anyhow, I would like to, um, like to have a motion to authorize my spending that, and again, it's because it's over the five hundred dollars or now the thousand dollars that we're allowed to spend, that's why I'm bringing it forward, even though we spoke about it at the last meeting.
I will make that motion that we spend a, not to exceed twelve hundred dollars for an appraisal of one eighty-four Main Street.
Do we hear a second?
I'll second it.
Diane has a comment?
I need to say how you were gonna pay for it.
Oh, we're gonna pay for it out of the U-Dog fund, sorry. And I picked that twelve hundred dollars because of the three people I spoke to, there was one that was the most professional, and he said his price would be a thousand dollars, not to exceed twelve hundred, so that's, that's why I went with.
I'd like to, I'd like to ask the attorney if you just get one appraisal, how about standard in practice?
I think you can get one appraisal, yeah, if you think it's way out of line, you might have to get another one, but, um, and one, one is sufficient by a licensed, uh, you know, qualified appraiser.
Yeah, if we get appraisal that that comes in, you know, like three hundred thousand or two hundred thousand, then we'd definitely go ahead and look for another one.
I had to get an appraisal on one eleven when I bought the building, and it, it took months, and it was pain, torture, and agony, and it cost a lot of money, because it's, it's so difficult to get appraisals done on commercial properties, it's not like house appraisals for some reason, so.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, so.
Next up is the personnel policy.
Have you got anything back from?
Yeah, and, and I should explain, um, Dort got here tonight, her father died recently. He had been very, very ill since way before Christmas, he had been in intensive care for over ninety days, um, then was transferred down to another facility, I believe in Hudson, and finally passed away last week, and he was a longtime public official in Hebron, and he's being honored there tonight, and that's where she is. Um, so that's certainly understandable, and we all certainly express our regret for her loss. Obviously, that's why she wasn't able to do much of anything within the past month, because her father took a really turn for worse about three weeks ago. And the personnel policy, that was being reviewed initially by Mike, correct?
Yes.
Yes, he was supposed to be repiping.
Yeah, because, yeah, Mike was gonna get it to you, and then you were gonna receive the policy from the old attorneys, and then.
All right, well, I'm sure I have it in the boxes and files, what, what would you like me to get and distribute it to everybody?
Yeah, I think I will, we can take a look at it, and then decide and how to forward it with it. Okay, Pedlar's license revision.
The Pedlar's license revision, I'll tell you right now, um, I looked them over, I talked with Dort today, I'm gonna drop them off to her, so definitely by next meeting, we'll not only have Pedlar's license review, but we're, as I said to her, we'll have a, um, a tablet version of it.
And this question came up because of Mr. Hot Dog's stand?
Mr. Hot Dog's stand, and, and looking at the version that we have compared to what I saw in the other ones, we definitely need a revision.
Okay.
And the revision will be very specific.
Okay, so we can discuss that in detail at, next month then.
And, and if anybody wants to look this over, I have it all right here, and I made outlines, and what I can do is sit down with Dort with an outlined version of the, uh, the new, new version.
And we still need some additional members for the client, oh, are there any questions from, from the board on the Pedlar's question? Questions from the public? Okay, next up, we still are short a member or two for the ZBA and planning board. They're at least able to meet and hold a quorum, but it would be best if we could have a full complement there in the event that somebody is sick, so if the paper is good, again, um.
I have someone, I need the applications or the, I guess, the applications, if I can get those tonight. I have somebody that is willing to join.
And if anybody is, is interested, all you have to do is give Diane a call, and she can give you the applications, and then they'll be reviewed, and then more than likely approved. Any other questions? Next up, authorize the mayor to sign the tax warrant, I never knew I got to arrest a tax. And Miss Diane tells me this is something that I have to do every year, and do I sign it right here in the public?
If you like.
You wanna explain to people what it is, 'cause I'm not sure myself.
What through the budget is what you're now going to raise money through taxes to pay the bills.
Okay. Any objections? Discussions? Here we go.
Your name.
Sound your life right.
Sorry.
That was a new car.
David, you do this at home already. Yeah, no, Judy signs my name.